Waiting for our cameras to come on here. We're live. Hey, I call the meeting to order. Like to welcome you to the School District of Waukesha Full Board Meeting on August 13th, 2014. Wonderful night that we have out there this evening and we have some business to take care of, but hopefully we'll be able to enjoy that evening pretty soon. So, at this time, I'd like to have everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, will you please call the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzink.
Here.
Steve Edlin.
Here.
Ellen Langel.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Ellen is out of town and she is excused for this evening. So, will you also please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to Bright Lights, one of our favorite parts of our meeting. Adam Kohill will be joining us tonight along with a number of his peers to talk about future Business Leaders of America. Adam?
Let's do that. I never get too far. I graduated and here I am three months later.
Well, welcome back.
Yeah, right? Thank you very much. So, I guess we'll wait until we get the presentation up right behind you guys. So, the four of us along with three others who are not in attendance got to go to the National Leadership Conference for FBLA, which stands for Future Business Leaders of America. So, we're just gonna kinda tell you what we did there and thank you guys for the support that you've given us over the past couple of years. And then here, we're gonna pass around these books, one on each side. You can just take a look at it. This is kind of just to tell you the rigor of the conference, a lot of the different things that we did. There are many different workshops, programs, speakers that we got to hear. So, it was really packed with the full weekend and stuff in Nashville, Tennessee. Okay, so here is the Waukesha North team. So, we have CJ, Tyler. Actually, you know what? I'm gonna, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is CJ Kayla. I go to the E-Achieve Academy. And so, I was basically, I had done FBLA two years prior at a different high school. And then this year, I went to them and said, "Can I come back?" They said, "No." So, so then I got integrated into the North program. So, Tyler and I, we went to Nationals and placed second.
I'm Tyler Tussman and I'm from Waukesha North.
Okay, so then CJ and Tyler competed in Network Design. They'll talk a little more about their event. Danica, who was unable to attend tonight, did the Business Financial Plan and then I did the job interview.
I'm Ellen Lattenberger and I am from Waukesha South and I met with two other students, Jack Lemers and Maggie Heran. They couldn't be here right now, but they were in Entrepreneurship and I was in Accounting
So, when we first start each year with our advisors, we kind of do a couple of community events in September and October, which we've done every year. And then we start to get into talking about competitive events. We get a long list of over 60 events to choose from. If you look in those books, you can, you can see a lot of the different events, some very intense with like network design and then some much easier that are just like impromptu speaking. Then once we pick an event, whichever one it may be, we have different practice, different things that we do. We have to keep on revising after each competition, regional, state, and nationals. And then, yeah, just keep on practicing. For me personally, I did job interview and it was just a lot of interviews with Mrs. Voight, nonstop. I got to meet with some other people, my principal, Jody Landish, and some of the other assistant principals. Just to talk about FBLA really quick, CJ said he was with E-Achieve. You may ask, why is he at Waukesha North for FBLA? But E-Achieve, obviously, it's limited in what you can do, but it was really cool. Ms. Hickson, who was one of your teachers, asked CJ, because CJ's competed in Nationals before, to be a part of FBLA at North. And obviously, it's paid off because we had another person go to Nationals, too. So, right here is a way that we were able to use technology this year, or last year. We were able to, early mornings, when we all had to get up for school and CJ had to get up early to get online to start school at E-Achieve, we got to livestream our meetings. So, here is me presenting something to CJ and then, then we got to like put them on YouTube and stuff and then we sent out our meetings to the people who didn't attend that we had each week. So, for my event, I did job interview. It was a fake position that I was applying for. I was the Public Affairs Associate position. Couldn't tell you what that means. Good thing I was able to make it up. So, my job, I guess, what I was applying for, this company called Merrick Corporation. So, I created that position. My job, because like a lot of you guys know, I'm involved in a lot of politics, so I was able to use my previous experiences on my real resume and put that towards the job I was applying for and talk about it very smoothly without any hiccups and stuff. So, I had to make a resume, a cover letter, and then do an application. So, right here is what you're looking at, is my cover letter that I had to write. Again, it was all made up. It was a fake company, a fake job, but the interview was very real. The people who were interviewing me pretended very well, as much as they could, that it was a fake job. And they would be like, "Thank you very much for coming in today. We've interviewed a lot of applicants, dah 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 dah." And then they would ask me different questions regarding my position and that's that. This is for Danica, who was unable to attend tonight. She did the Business Financial Plan. So, while I won't talk about it much, but she was able to like make a fake company as well. And she had this huge book. This is one of the events that takes a lot of time and effort. I know that Danica and Mrs. Voight were putting a lot of time critiquing the little things, going through the entire Business Financial Plan. I wish we would've brought a copy of it, too, show it, because it was, it was really cool, very, very impressive. CJ and Tyler?
Our event was Network Design. We had, it was a two-part, first state and nationals, where you would take an objective test, 100 questions, and you would have 60 minutes to complete it. So, if you scored in the top percentage that they dictated, you would be able to move on to the case study problem, which is when a fake company hires you and asks you to create a network for them. So, that's what we did. And you can see in the picture that you're allowed a poster board and that we kind of map it out. So, as a visual, so that people can see what we're doing and how it's gonna work.
Yes, this is a recorded video of like how we go through the, like, case study portion of it, so.
It's a quick video. We usually get about 15 minutes to prep for this when we, we're given the prompt and we get 15 minutes to prompt. And then we start doing this and we get about seven minutes to speak.
And we also have one public, uh, public Wi-Fi setup so that also our users can come and socialize about music and share stuff with other users. So, what will you talk to us?
Right, so, what we have are, we'll be using PF Sense routers, which is an open source router. We'll be using four of them, so that'll be a total cost of $1,200. Our sales PCs that are used by the cashiers will be mid-range PCs and will be $4,800 total.
Yeah, so that was just a very small selection of it. It's essentially, you have to do a lot of background work and tell, okay, this is what we're gonna use, you know, this is the approximate ballpark for that. And, you know, then you get, you get a unique case study every single time. So, you know, it's a lot of storing something up here and like, okay, now we can use this or that, so.
And coming up shortly will be a Google spreadsheet that we made beforehand during more in the study nights. And it's a spreadsheet of three different categories. We had our small businesses, you have the medium businesses, and our enterprise grade. And for each one, we would have routers, switches, firewall, servers, PCs, cabling, web hosting, and any other part of networking that we could possibly ask. We researched the best possible products for the customer and then we got the prices off of them. And then we updated them before we went on so that all those prices that you heard on there were actual prices, they're not ones that were like, "Well, this should cost about this." All those prices and all the stuff that we had up there, we had researched and we went through the sheets of them so that everything that we gave them, we knew it would work and that we would know the exact prices of it, of all the different types that we had.
So, the first hurdle that we have to go through is the regional conference. So, this, the conference was in Menominee Falls, I believe?
Yeah.
Yeah, in Menominee Falls. So, it's our region, so it's different schools in Waukesha County that come together. And then, once if we all compete well, I know we had a big group and it obviously kind of dwindles as people advance, but then these were the group of students who got to advance to state. And then from state, we obviously move on to nationals. Oh, I guess, oh, yeah. So, then here's the state leadership conference. That was in Appleton. So, we got to go there Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday in April. And then again, we do the same thing. We compete in our events. It's the same event throughout, but like I said, you do a little, more revisions, you do more practice. So, as you do move on, you're competing with stronger people, so you've gotta be better and better. And it just shows the continuous work. And then seven people have qualified for Nationals and it has been the best representation from the school district since 1976. So, obviously, it was an effort put in by our schools and it was obviously something that we were very proud of. I guess Nationals was in Nashville and I guess CJ, do you wanna, or Tyler, do you wanna talk a little more about you guys being sequestered and process?
How am I sleeping that top one? Fuck. When we get, as I said before, when we get our prompt, you only get 15 or so minutes to, 15 or 20 minutes to produce your solution from the prompt. So, you're sequestered because you don't want anyone telling another group that had, is from the same state, what the prompt is and they get hours to, and the internet to figure it out. So, what we had to do was be sequestered. So, as you see in the second photo down, that's the sequester room. There is pieces of paper and mints and pens. That's all that was in there. So, we are stuck in there from 7:50 a.m. till around noon and no internet, no nothing. So, we just had to stay in there and talk to the other people that are in there. So, and then they called you when you were ready. So, it was, so then you would have to go walk into the room and you had 20 minutes to produce a solution. Then you walked right into the next room when the judges were rating. So, you sit for four hours and then in 30 minutes, the entire thing is done. So, and as you can see in the bottom picture, we're very tired because the, this was the fourth or fourth day or fifth day of the conference that we've been getting up all day and doing work. So, it was very tiring on that day to keep going.
Now, you can see why I did job interview. All I'm good at is talking. Five minutes, one done. So, a little about what we did in Nashville. CJ and Tyler, as you can see, their event was a lot more intense, a lot more effort that was put in. I'm not, I guess not saying that my, my event had no effort, but the other advisor, Mrs. Hickson, who was unable to attend tonight, she's actually coming up from Nashville because she has family there. I got to go tour the state Capitol, which is that picture on the left. So, now my goal is to tour every state Capitol. That's what I said. I've toured two now, Wisconsin and Nashville. Just go to all of them. And then, oh, if we can go back one more. Bottom left. So, another thing that we tried out, which I know gave Mrs. Richter a heart attack 100 million times, we tried out Uber. Are any of you familiar with the taxi service Uber? You may have heard about it in the Milwaukee County Board, or actually, the City of Milwaukee Board was just debating this like two weeks ago. Uber is starting to come to City of Milwaukee and the bordering communities. So, Uber is a taxi service, but it's a service that you use on your phone and that you request a taxi from your phone. You can see where the driver is and you can like see them come up. So, when we first landed in Nashville, we met one of our other, another person who was coming up from their vacation to be with us. And we actually downloaded the app and ended up using the taxi service through Uber. So, that was, I know Ms. Hickson, our other advisor, is very into a lot of new technology things, obviously the school board, too, with iPads. So, this was one way that we use technology was Uber. And I think it was a great experience, right, Ms. Richter?
She was very, she was very scared. She's like, "So, a guy's just gonna come because I said on my phone and he's just gonna show up and just, we're gonna get in his car and drive to the hotel?" And I'm like, "Yeah, and it's gonna save us like 20 bucks." So, for all of the Waukesha North competitors, I was able to get ninth place. So, the top 10 competitors go on stage. Tyler and CJ did phenomenally well. They got second place and also got some scholarship money, correct?
Yeah.
Yep. And then Danica, again, who was unable to attend, got the top 15. So, it was obviously an impressive work by all of us. But also for Ellen, Jack, and Maggie, I think it's just very, very impressive that they were able to make it to Nationals because there's almost over 10,000 participants and there's 60 events. So, we were all going up against 100, 120, 130 people. So, to be top 15 or even just, just progress is very, very impressive.
Wow.
And then, this was a picture that me and Maggie took.
Um, you and Ellen, you mean?
I mean, oh, me and Ellen, sorry.
That's okay. So, we, there were five competitors who will be seniors in the fall, which is really great because then we can come back this year and kind of share our experiences, maybe get a few more students involved or maybe even have a bigger group for next year. And we appreciate all of the support that you've given us and given all these opportunities. And now, we're already preparing for next year and so we would like to request your continued support for making this opportunity and making this all a reality for us, so.
Yeah, so with that is, I just think the fundraising part of it, it's very important for the school district to have our back because it's something that we're going to Nashville to represent our state and our school district. So, obviously, I'm graduating, so I like, I'm talking for the juniors. It was very important to, that you guys still have their backing next year if they do go and move on to Nationals. So, with that, thank you guys very much. And I actually do have one thing. I want Mrs. Voight to come up for a second. Come on up. So, I know this was not part of the presentation. So, Bright Lights, I know you guys usually will like present like a little award or something. Mrs. Voight retired this year. She has been our FBLA advisor for how many years?
Many.
How many years?
Going back to 1976 thing? I just like the history.
Yeah, so, Mrs. Voight, me personally, I've been an FBLA member since I was a freshman and I owe her a lot. When I first applied for my first job at a country club, she was the person who put my resume together and helped me with that. She's been someone who's helped a lot of students throughout the years, students who now have very professional jobs, who are making a lot of money, students that she still sees every now and then. So, I think FBLA at North would not be where it is and we would, none of us would be successful and none of us would be going to Nationals if it wasn't for Mrs. Voight. So, we just have a little gift. I just want you to open it just to show the members. So, it's very nice. I know you guys usually like present something, but I just thought I'd mix it up. So, this was a picture that we took at Nationals and we were all able to sign it, so. So, I just, like, honestly, none of this would, none of this would be possible with Mrs. Voight. So, she's the one that I thank and I think that we all thank for her.
(applause).
Yes, and Mrs. Hickson, Miss, and Ms. Richter, of course, yes. But Ms. Richter's still here and I notice that she still has other students that she has to send to Nationals next year. Yeah, so Ms. Hickson was our advisor and she's still gonna be our advisor, but she was not able to attend, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll have a few questions for you. Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, a couple of points to your group. First of all, congratulations on another wonderful showing. You have to know that as a board, we take a lot of pride in things that you do, so we're very grateful for that. Number two, thank you for sending us postcards from Nashville because that was, that was a very good touch on somebody's part, but we appreciated that. And last, one last point, you mentioned, we might be wondering about having somebody from E-Achieve. Actually, that's very pleasing to hear because we, we do know, we have talked about it and too bad Ellen isn't here, because it's a big point with her, is that when we have students involved with E-Achieve, one of the things we're concerned about is are they missing some of the other activities that, that are available to people in a traditional school? So, if you can find a way to include somebody, we're, we're behind it. I think it's a great idea and we don't doubt doing that. And I really appreciate the fact that CJ was able to join you guys and, and bring home some bacon.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Karen?
I noticed in your booklet, a lot of just really intense classes. What were some of the breakout sessions that you took?
Hey, can you go ahead? I took one on human resources ethics, not really what I'm part of, but it is something that I'd like to know more about, so I learned more about that. It was a long time ago.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
So, I tried to remember. They took about 25 or 30 minutes each, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different ones. I remember at state, I took one on social media, so it kinda talked about different ways that businesses use social media to attract different customers. And I thought that was interesting because me and with my political background, I'm always looking for new ways to reach younger voters and so I try to, try to connect everything back to politics.
Yeah, and those, those breakout sessions, you can tell by design, they're very pointed to some of the more specific things you can do. So, it's obviously you're not necessarily going to be attracting the network design crowd, you're, you know, something about like marketing or, there's so much stuff there, it's like, I can see why somebody really likes this, but it isn't all for everybody.
They organize it with career clusters, kinda like you do your course selections here, next to them, if you saw they had like a dash, it would be like dash HR, dash IT or something.
Yeah.
Kinda designate this, kinda the career cluster that it's pertaining to.
And you had said thank you to us for allowing you to go, but thank you for going out, just as Bill said, and taking our name out and doing so well and putting a good spotlight on Waukesha. Thank you all. And I'm so excited to, to hear what you're gonna do and some of those courses in there, we're about starting your own business. I just, I think like Ms. Voight, we're, we're just looking forward to you guys coming back and, and seeing what you've done with all that you've learned.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brzink?
Yes. I'm so very proud of each and every one of you. That FBLA is just, you know, such a wonderful, outstanding program and it takes some very special people, very special kids, kids with goals, kids with special interests to participate in, and you've done so extremely well. And some of you already out in our community, like you are, Adam. I happen to know Adam from, because he's very, very active in our community in politics and represents us very well, very intelligently. And this is a wonderful, wonderful experience, an opportunity for each one of you to develop yourself for the future. So, thanks to the district for their support and thanks to you for your participation. You make us proud and I know that your future is very bright.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Madden?
I really just wanted to say thank you to Diane Voight. She's done wonderful in our school district with the students throughout the years. I could probably tell you when she started because I was working in the DA's office and I used to get students from her to come and train. So, she's always been very
Great.
...active in the community and with her students and we're gonna miss her.
Well, the, they're special people. Diane is one of those people who've spent many years doing this. And Diane, I think one of the things that you should take away from this tonight is that these students have learned from you and they've learned a lot more than just business. They recognized you tonight. They care. They wanted to say thank you. And there's a lot of teachers and a lot of people who are leaders of clubs and coaches who don't ever hear those thank yous. They know, they know they have an impact as a leader and, and influence the children. But one of the things that you must have taught these people is, is dealing with relationships and expressing themselves and they were able to do that to show their appreciation tonight. So, you guys did a, a great job. You were talking about business, but business is way more than business. It's about people and about relationships. And you just had shown something that perhaps you may not have known that you learned, but you showed, you showed us that live on TV and that recognition was very appropriate and you guys are prophetic because we don't have, we don't have any recognitions tonight, so you did a great job.
Was that on there?
Yeah, and it was not on there, so.
Oh, okay.
This is all original by you guys and you did a great job, so we may have to have you back for recognitions.
I'm not, I graduated. I am taking my break, guys. Seriously, I gotta go, I'll go deal with Marquette Board of Directors or deal with, deal with them for four years.
You gotta get out of life, huh?
Yeah. I'm like, school district, gotta move on, gotta move on.
Congratulations, you guys, you did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Adam, you may be interested in knowing, there's two Marquette people on our board, Mr. Baumgart and myself, so best wishes at Marquette.
And I know Mr. Gray's sons, too.
Yep, great school.
I'll come back, I'll let you know all that experience.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And like I, like I mentioned, we do not have any recognitions this evening and we do not have student representatives yet to provide their report as we're not in session, but we should have them at our next month's meeting. So, we'll move on to the time where we hear our, from our citizens. We're now at the section of meeting where our citizens get an opportunity to speak. As in the past, each individual will be limited to two to three minutes of time in order to express their concerns. At the two and a half minute mark, Mrs. Brzink will give you a signal and we'll give you about 30 seconds or so to wrap up your comments. We expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please remember to silence your phones at this time. And we do have two speakers that have signed up this evening. Our first speaker is Ricardo Contreras? Sorry about butchering your name there, Ricardo.
That's fine. Just gotta roll your arse a little bit more.
All right.
I've spoken like four times here and still get just as nervous. Hello, Mr. Gray, school board, school board members and guests and the millions watching at home. I'm here today actually to discuss very important matters to me. It's been 13 years since I first began my career, as I say. It began in first grade with my first grade teacher, Mrs. Acevedo. I remember that day as if it was 13 years ago, actually. Think I was wearing a blue polo, khaki pants, some cereal box SpongeBob watch that didn't work, and the best light-up sneakers money could afford. Somewhere along the lines, next thing you know, I'm shaking Ryan and Tim's hand at graduation. Am I allowed to say Ryan? I mean, I am an alumni. I mean, I'll press you at work, so, sorry, Mr. Crone. Anyways, now here I am, standing before you, 13 years later, a high school graduate, weeks away from going to college. Yes, I thank my parents, family, and friends, but something that I've realized, just working here for the past year and just thinking about back, just from when I started, is that I don't thank you guys enough. And by you guys, I mean you, the school board members, the people that I've gotten the privilege to work with, and my teachers. Everyone that's just been a part of my 13 years of education here at the school district. I've had, like I said, the absolute pressure, pleasure of working in the business office for the past year. And being a student for 13 years, I never really took into consideration all the people and just all the effort that many of you people in the business office, people at my school, just put in just so that I have that great education that I consider that I've had these past 13 years. Like I said, I've gotten a better look at just how the district runs, obviously not in detail, but just a better look at it. I was granted many, many great opportunities here at the School District of Waukesha, from sports to youth options, and again, my internship here. sports to youth options, and again, my internship here. Um, I went to Orlando with a health academy, State with a track team, and I don't know, there's just many memories and many like little kinds of, little acts of kindness, that kindness that I've appreciated. Like, I can take you back for last year. Um, I didn't have my driver's license when I first started working here, so I'd have to bike here. And one time my bike got stolen and I came here walking and people in the business office asked me like, "Oh, what happened to your bike?" And I was like, "Oh, it got stolen." And two days later, two people came in, Mr. Gray being one of them and Kelly Modo, with bikes.
Wow.
Bikes for me, just so like I could get to work and it's just those little acts of kindness that as a student, um, and now just like moving on to college, I appreciate. And I guess I just wanted to thank you guys for that. I don't know how many parents come here and complain about how you guys are doing your jobs, but me being a student and, um, obviously working with you guys, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, just letting you guys know you guys are doing all right, so just keep doing what you're doing. Um, so yeah, just wanna thank everyone in the school district, um, for either directly or indirectly, um, shaping me to the person that I am today. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Reese.
Paul Reese, um, I'd like to start off by reading, uh, something Paul wrote, 1 Corinthians 13:11. "When I was a child, I talked like a child; I thought like a child; I reasoned like a child. When I became a man, I put childish ways behind me." Um, my daughter can know, knows me as, my middle name is, like I said at the other meeting, is Mr. Censor. I censor everything my daughter does. I censor where she plays, no playing in the streets. I censor what she eats. Ice cream is not a meal. I censor everything she does. I will censor everything she does in life. I will censor what she watches and what she reads. I am her father. I am a man and I am responsible for how she comes out in life." Um, and I, I thought about this and I, I came to the realization that everybody here pretty much agrees with me on this fact because of act, because of, um, Waukesha One. When Waukesha One came online, there was big talk in here, Mr. O'Brien not included, he wasn't here at the time, but about filters on, on our, our internet to censor what our kids would watch and what they would, what they would see. And if this book was a movie, those filters would kick it out. There is no way it would be in there. And if a teacher showed that movie to any student, they would be fired and they would probably lose their license to teach. It is absolutely absurd that this is in our school. I mean, you know, some may say, "Well, it's a book. What, what could be wrong with a book? I mean, it's just literature. You're just reading something." I don't know, what could be wrong with that? No one could end up stabbing something, somebody over something they read, could they? That would never happen. But kids reason different than adults. They read things and they reason different than adults. They do not reason the same. And this filth does not belong in our schools. It is just preposterous that it is here, that, that a bunch of pointy-headed elitists think that they know better than me, that is my daughter, it is not theirs to corrupt. And to say that it was, it was, it was optional to read, really, what homework did I ever get that was handed to me that was optional, that I thought was optional, that I would do something different than everybody else? I, I don't recall that ever being in school. I remember things being told, if I didn't do it, it was half my grade. I remember that option, but not an option that, well, here, you don't have to read this, but you can read something else. You know, when I was a kid growing up, my grandmother used to read to us. And she used to read things like Edgar Allan Poe, and I remember those things very fondly and once a midnight dreary, this is not. I remember that as a kid. My grandma will be 101 this year. And when we were kids, we'd drive up to Tomahawk and she would read that and I was fascinated by it.
30 seconds?
It was absolutely, the greatest things I've ever heard were, were what Poe wrote. And this is not even close. And to say that there's not a hundred other things that couldn't be read in class is a damn lie. Thanks for your time.
That's all the people who have been signed up for this evening. Um, are there other people in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the minute approval. We do have, uh, one set of minutes for approval and that's the July 9th, 2014 regular, uh, board meeting. Have a motion at this time.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Brzink, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion? Okay, Sue, will you, uh, take the roll call?
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. It passes eight zero, Sue. This time we'll move on to communications. Uh, Mr. Gray, did you receive any?
No correspondence this morning.
None, okay. And Mrs. Brzink, uh, do you have, uh, an update on the Waukesha Education Foundation?
I do, thank you very much. The July 21st Bob Duckett Memorial Golf Outing was a great success. There were approximately 90 golfers plus dinner guests. Through the generosity of these WEF supporters, the foundation earned $12,000. All of these dollars will help to fund the annual grants awarded to the district. Also, the golf committee asks you, your friends and your coworkers, to join them and other participants next year on July 20th at the Legends at Merrill Hills to show your support for the WEF and the students they benefit. Plans for the November 2nd Celebration of Excellence are underway. The foundation has selected two individuals to receive the Lifetime Excellence in Education Awards. David DeRiemer, Director of the Planetarium, and recently retired school board member, Dan Warren. Over their many years of service, both of these individuals have made significant contributions to education and students in the Waukesha School District and are very deserving of this recognition. Arrangements for entertainment for the celebration continue and include a number of district student groups. Some of our Rose Glenn students will be playing orf instruments and singing under the direction of Patty Castreba. A quartet of Joey Highlands North students will sing the National Anthem. Several of Erin Kossen's Wood Ear students will entertain us with world music drumming and Courtney Gildersleeve's South Orchestra is performing rock and contemporary music. As details are confirmed, I will share additional highlights of this event. Please remember to mark your calendars for Sunday, November 2nd, from 2 o'clock to 5 o'clock at South High School. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brzink. And I believe the, uh, golf outing more than doubled in their participants this year, so that's a, that's a positive thing. And did Mr. Gray get a hole in one? Was that, was that just rumor?
Close, yeah. Been down close. Got some sand first. Call a sand trap a hole.
Thank you, Barb. We'll move on to our safety committee, uh, report by Mr. Baumgart.
Um, we did not have a safety meeting, uh, this month. It had to be moved to August 20th due to some scheduling conflicts, so I'll be reporting on that in the September board meeting.
Want to roll right into the charter school?
I will roll right into the charter school report, which is just a little bit longer, not much. Uh, quite simply, uh, I want to offer congratulations, I think board members know this, but, uh, for the public, congratulations to our STEM Academy for being recognized by the Department of Public Instruction with a dissemination grant of $125,000. This falls into the same theme which I've been mentioning for some time, that is that the school district of Waukesha is being noticed for, by other people out there. And with this grant, uh, dissemination grant is, money is used to show other school districts how this works, so this is just gonna add to our being noticed out there, uh, a very positive, uh, for the district. Uh, one other small item, uh, for board members to know that, uh, we, we are going to be doing some additional tweaking to the, uh, charter contract. Quite simply, we have to update Appendix B. There's some, uh, a lot of, a lot of language in there about using the WKCE to measure our students and we're gonna update it to whatever the current assessments will be. And I'll be bringing that forward to you, uh, when it's ready. So that, that concludes my charter school report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. This time we'll move on, uh, with our consent agenda. And, uh, Ms. Clifton, do we have, uh, any gifts that we received?
We do, we have two gifts to report this evening. The first is $2,000 donated by Paul and Kathleen Omen to Les Paul Middle School. And in fact, both of these gifts go to Les Paul Middle School. The, uh, second one is associated with the first one, it is matching funds through Northwestern Mutual. So combined, there's $5,250 going to Les Paul Middle School for the use of, uh, technology to be purchased for that building.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for their continued support. Uh, your agenda includes, uh, various categories for approval this evening. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, uh, you will have that opportunity. Uh, there were no expulsion panels held during this past month. And, uh, if anyone would like to have, if, uh, any items set aside at this time for separate consideration, please indicate at this time. Okay? Uh, Mr. Edlin, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of 12 resignations and 43 new or modified contracts for the 2014-15 school year. The information was provided in your packet and an addendum was placed on your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mrs. Reinacek? Any discussion? All right, Sue, will you take the roll, please?
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Aaron Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Motion passes eight zero.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
We'll move on to, uh, Mr. Gray's superintendent report.
Okay, first of all, if you've been by south or west, you can see that the, the football fields are starting to shape up very well. Uh, south field is completed and they are practicing on it west. I'm expecting this week, hopefully it'll be finished. Uh, north is a little bit behind schedule because of the weather, um, so if you're planning to go to the north, first north football game, it will be at, played at Kettle Marine, um, because that field won't, won't be ready. Uh, but actually, Kettle Marine Field is actually just right down the street from north, so it's actually a pretty close, pretty close location for us. FNF, we talked about an additional workshop, hopefully next week, which we'll need soon for energy, and, and Sue will work on that. Obviously, all board members are invited to that, but the, the FNF members, hopefully for sure, we can find a date that, that works for everyone. Um, so I don't know if your preference is Sue, for Sue to call or try to manage it in some other fashion, but, but next week would be an optimal time for that if, if people are available.
Should we maybe just do that now?
If you can, we have time, yep.
Perhaps Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, are those the days that we're looking at? Potentially next week?
Probably any day, but Friday.
Why don't, why don't we start with, with Monday? Is anyone not available to meet, let's say, 6 o'clock Monday?
Talking to the FNF people? Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and actually, it's a-
All of us.
It's a workshop for everyone.
For everyone. It's, it's, it's open everyone, but it's an FNF committee meeting. We'd like to get FNF, yeah. Yeah, FNF for sure, yeah.
Just to clarify, the idea is as many board members as possible?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But we're gonna note it's, is a, is an FNF committee meeting.
Okay.
Well, we could, we could note it as a, as a workshop if we wanted to.
Work session.
And that's really, I think, what the intent was.
That was the intent, was it? Another workshop?
Yeah.
Work session.
Yeah, it, the same thing is gonna happen anyways.
Right.
So is, is anyone not able to make Monday night at 6? Okay, Bill can't?
Yeah.
And I think Ellen is still-
She'll be out.
Still out of town. How about Tuesday? Tuesday?
Like, that week is out for me.
The whole week, huh?
So two, all of next week is out? Okay. Tuesday evening? Well, for everyone else, then Monday looks like a good time. So, since you'll be out, every, every day, Bill, so, okay. Monday at 6? Looking good?
Monday at 6.
Is that okay, Barb?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Why don't we shoot for that?
Monday, 6:00 PM?
Yeah.
Okay. Is 6:00 okay with 6:15, 6:30 work for, I know some people are traveling aways to get here, so.
No, it should be good.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Next item on, uh, August 21st, I'll, I'll send out more information this Friday, but, uh, we have GE Day where we have our hundreds and hundreds of volunteers, and this is, this is a shirt for this year, and this is the 20th anniversary of that, of that event.
Oh, okay.
So not only are they gonna be here, but there's also going to be an event later that evening down at, uh, Miller Park, which, uh, myself and the, the acting superintendent for Milwaukee will be speaking briefly, and, uh, so we're looking forward to that event. And, and-
Is it recorded?
What's that? Oh, it'll be, yeah, well, I, I think it's recorded, probably on all the major news.
Brewers aren't even in town actually.
Well, you can still have an event there, uh, without the Brewers.
It's all about that.
Yeah. In any event, um, very lucky, uh, Les Paul Central was, uh, picked as one of the schools way back when, and now that is going to work out for us because some of the painting that will be done to change the signage and so on can be done by, by the volunteers. So that, that's gonna work out very, very well. So we'll have more information in the, in, in Friday's update. Um, evaluate, evaluation information, I know Mr. Como wanted that sent out about a week ago, however, we are just this week getting, uh, school report card information and ACT information. And even though that is embargoed for a few more weeks, it will go out, uh, Friday, um, with, with the other evaluation materials. But I did, I did want to include it in that, um, especially our report cards, because it is, it's good information. And, and it looks like we're having some success out there, so I especially want to get that out there, but-
I think it's sending it confidential.
It, it, it must remain confidential until, uh, the ACT can, can go public on August 20th and school report cards go public on September 16th. So boards can have that and, and use that for your purposes, but is, in terms of, uh, media presentations or, or going to other members of the public, it has to stay embargoed. So that, you, and, and I'll have notes on that, what, what you can do with it or not, uh, when that comes on Friday.
Okay.
And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gray. We're gonna move on to our standing committee reports at this time. And we're gonna start with the policy committee by Ms. Madden.
Well, Mr. President, I have no report tonight. We will be meeting before the next board meeting, I'm sure.
We, we have a, a meeting planned for, um, it's either next week or the week after, I, I don't recall the date, but, um, and it is a pretty full agenda.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, we've got a lot of things to cover.
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Madden. We'll roll into the technology committee report by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening. We're expecting our meeting to be in September after the Waukesha One rollouts have been completed for the year.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to finance and facilities committee, uh, presented by Mr. O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have, uh, five action items, two information items, and no discussion items covered tonight. Uh, first action item is notice of claim from K-12 Management, Inc. The district has been notified as required by Wisconsin statute that K-12 Management intends to file a claim against us for a disputed balance due from services provided to IQ Academy in 2012. Due to the potential for future litigation, the matter was discussed in closed session of our legal counsel. Following this closed session, uh, we, uh, we had a recommendation, and it was approved by the FNF, to disallow, to issue a notice of disallowance of claim from K-12 Management, and I so moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Questions?
Could we just go over, review on the notice, what the claim was about? It's been a while.
I, I don't think we should at this point. We, I can update you in the Friday.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that.
But I think because the, the information was shared in closed session, we probably would be advised.
Okay, you're right, you're right.
But I, I will share the information.
It's been a while since we had, have been apprised of that, so.
Right, and I, but I'll share that information in Fridays.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah, just to, to support what Mr. Gray says, you have to be very careful when you're in legal counsel, that.
That's right.
You know, you can't disclose. But let's just say that we're, we're doing what we believe is correct from a legal strategy point of view.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Ready to take the vote? So this is a motion to approve the notice of disallowance of the claim from K-12 Management. Sue, will you take the roll call?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. That passes eight-zero, Sue?
The next is, uh, the next action item is approval of facility analysis recommendations. In this case, it was recommended that the decision on this item be deferred until the list of recommendations is prioritized by the administration in additional board work session, which we previously discussed, which we've now scheduled for next Monday. We would like to have an additional work session next week, which is next Monday, and then this item will be brought back after FNF and then into the September board meeting. So there's no action on that item tonight. The third action item is approval of 2014-15 budget for publication. The 2014-15 budget cemetery summary, cemetery, summary, has been provided for your review. The budget is available for public inspection at the public library and the district budget, business office, as well as on our website. To summarize, total revenues are virtually unchanged from last year at $154.4 million for the general and special education funds. Salaries and fringe benefits account for 77% of all expenditures. Based on our current estimates for state aid, we anticipate less than 1% decrease in equalization aid. That along with a minimal increase in revenue cap contributes to a 1.27% increase in proposed taxes as the budget was originally prepared. In consideration for the potential to prove some of the projects identified from the facility study, the committee recommended including additional scenarios for budget publication to share with constituents the full impact that an energy exemption levy might have on our budget, tax levy and mill rate. In addition to the budget as presented, two additional budgets were asked for that included a $9 million borrowing with a five-year and 10-year amortization schedule. A copy of the tax levy summary with the three scenarios has been provided along with the fund summary for each scenario for your review. If you guys looked, it was distributed by Ms. Clifton before the board meeting, including the $9 million example. Following a detailed review, the budget was approved for publication as originally presented with two additional budgets that include a $9 million borrowing with a five-year and a 10-year amortization, and I so moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Madden? Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
No further discussion, I just wanna bring up a few points. The main thing we wanted to be clear is we wanted to make sure that the community has, has a clear picture of what the scenarios we are looking at relative to the mill levy. Not that these are what we're going to do, but if we do consider and we think the public should have as full of transparency and openness as possible, sent, therefore, the two additional scenarios for the $9 million borrowing. Doesn't mean we're gonna borrow $9 million, doesn't mean we're gonna raise the tax levy for that. It means that it allows people to come and comment, comment before we do it, makes it very clear, and they can comment on the amount, whether we should levy for it, anything they feel like doing prior to us actually doing this, uh, doing something, whatever that is. But it'll be related to the work session.
And that's really the portion of the budget that's, it's, it's, that we're gonna be looking at in the workshop on Monday. So, we're just trying to take our time here, slow down a little bit, and we're trying to be very methodical, and we're trying to make sure that our constituents have a chance to really understand what we're doing here, so.
And, and let me add that we did trim $2 million off of the.
Yes, you did.
Off the price tag. We just didn't feel that we were gonna go quite that high, and we didn't think it was realistic to put that down as a scenario. The other thing, there was a 15-year amortization, and we did say, let's just look at five and 10, or zero, which is, means that we don't do any borrowing, we, we, or no levy relative to borrowing. You'll notice when you look at the papers, there's a significant savings by going to five years versus 10 years. Not only you have a lower rate, but lower interest rate. You'll also notice that the impact for someone with a $300,000 home is $72 for the, a year for scenario number one, and $36 a year for scenario number two. It's just that you pay for it twice as long. So, it gives very good details for any citizen to look at, and we really do encourage citizens to, to get involved and give us feedback on these things.
Mrs. Brzink?
Um, my question was answered, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions or discussion? So the motion on the floor is to approve the budget for the 2014-2015 school year as presented, and that includes the two additional budgets for $9 million borrowing either at a five-year amortization and/or a 10-year. Sue, will you call the roll call?
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Okay, so that, um, Ms. Clifton, that will be available for public review how?
We will publish it in the newspaper. We also have the general budget on our district website. It's available at the library, and it's also available in my office. City, my office as well.
So if anyone watching tonight or in the audience, if you would like to look at the budget, we, we're making it available for you at this time. And we'll, we'll also have to set in, in evening for a hearing. And I believe that's your next action item, Mr. O'Brien.
Thanks for stealing my thunder, Mr. O'Brien. Item number four is the approval of a public hearing date. Now that we have a budget to share with the public, and the next step is to set a public hearing date to give citizens the opportunity to provide input on the budget prior to adoption. The administration has recommended September 10th, 2014, as the date for the public hearing to discuss, to discuss the 2014-15 preliminary budget. The hearing will begin at 6:30 P.M. at the Lindholm Building in the boardroom. The committee approved the September 10th, 2014, date at 6:30 P.M. in the Lindholm Building Boardroom as the date and location for the public hearing, and I so moved.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mrs. Reincheck? Discussion? Mr. Brenner?
That's a regular board night meeting. Also, you're just planning to have this, and the board meeting will follow immediately?
Uh, advance, in advance of the, the board meeting will follow at seven normally scheduled, this is at 6:30. And, and I might say that, you know, because of the way we're going about this, this isn't the only opportunity. People could come to FNF and also give us feedback on the Monday before, which would be, I believe that would be the eighth.
Eighth.
Yeah, September 8th. So, we're really encouraging people to provide their feedback and, and ask questions of board members, too.
Any other questions?
Advance notice to the public, then we'll need to change the date for the H.R. meeting.
H.R., yeah.
We usually have it at that time.
Or, or move it a little before, maybe 6:15?
Possible, I suppose. We'd have to confirm it with everybody that they can make that time, and Dr. Langella's near tonight, but we'll, we'll try to do that.
And, and in the past, we've had more like, uh, we've allotted like 15 minutes for the hearing, and it's been relatively short. But we thought that this year there could potentially be more people who wanted to come, so we wanted to give a half hour there, so. Other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion is to set the public hearing for our budget on September 10th, 2014, at 6:30 P.M. in the Lindholm Building. Sue, will you take the roll call?
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight, eight-zero, Sue?
Okay.
Mr. O'Brien?
Okay, our fifth and final action item tonight, and this is one that I think we can all be, we can all say at least this behind us. The approval of the sports facility usage agreement. The committee has been working on a new rental agreement with Waukesha Express Swim that will replace the current contract that expires on October 1st, 2014. This agreement will provide access to the south and west pools for a period of three to five years, with annual rent to be $87,300 for the first three years, and years four and five to be negotiated. The agreement also calls for a one-time payment of $20,000 to create a sinking fund for equipment replacement. $20,500 annual rental amount will be designated for the sinking fund. The agreement has been shared with Waukesha Express Swim, and they have accepted the terms. The committee approved the sports facility usage agreement with Waukesha Express Swim as presented, and I so moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Madden? Discussion? Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, I did not support this on FNF, I was the only person, and I will not be supporting it tonight. My reasoning is very simple. I don't think that public education should be in the business of supporting nonprofit businesses to the point where, to the point where we're at. It's, it's, uh, it's really a shame, because I think the district is, is, um, not getting enough revenue to nearly cover the expenses. We're mandated by the state to provide public education, not this type of a business relationship within the community. And I have a feeling that what's gonna happen now is that, and I'm hoping this won't happen, that we're gonna hear from parents saying that the prices of the programs have been raised.
Oh, yeah.
In order to cover the district's contract and, and demands that they want now, when in fact, for the last 10 years, the, the contract stated that the organization would pay around $30,000 per year for 10 years. And that was after building that organization a $4.1 million swimming pool. And during that time period, you know, we, we cut programs, laid off teachers, downsized the district. My, my fear now is that 10 years later, we're gonna have some very expensive repair bills. And we are for the next 30, 40 years. I, I was kind of on board with this when we started out at about $145,000 a year. I thought that was more reasonable, considering that the income for this organization is over $1 million a year. Considering that the CEO and head swimming coach is at about $143,000 a year. Considering that his wife is around $90,000 a year. Those are stunning numbers. You know, I, I, the money's coming from somewhere, and it's coming out of our budget. Thank you.
Mrs. Brzink?
Um, Mr. Edlin, I guess I didn't understand that the Express Swim Club was a nonprofit.
They are.
With a million dollar a year profit?
About 1.1, not profit, income. It's around 1.1 million.
Have you, has the committee, you know, examined their expense sheets so that you know how the 1 million is, is used?
Well, the only thing that we have access to is what the public has access to, and that is their IRS form, which is available online.
Okay, yeah.
Through a site called GuideStar.com. And, uh, so, you know, if you wanna be a contributor to a nonprofit, you have the ability to see at least where their money is being spent to a certain point. You know, it's, it's up to their board of directors to pay whatever they want to their staff. But this is a relationship between the district and, and that organization, and I don't think it's been in any way, shape, or form a fair one, or equitable.
Are they allowed as a nonprofit to keep a certain amount of what they, their income in reserve annually?
They are allowed to have a, you know, a little cushion, you know, every business is, sure.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, you know, I, I'll tell ya, when you talk a million dollars, it sounds big. But it's a million dollars in revenue that's used to cover expenses. If I bid a $10 million contract, I don't get $10 million of profit. I get a percentage of covering that contract. So, someone say, well, they just got a $100 million contract, but if you're getting 0.2% profit on that $100 million contract, that's far lower than what an oil company gets for a gallon of gas in terms of percentage of profit. When you're a nonprofit, you can't have profits, it's, it's part of being a nonprofit. Now, do employees get paid in nonprofits? Yes, sometimes they get significant salaries. It's a competitive market for those type of people, and sometimes they get significant salaries. I guess the problem I have with the objections to the, it's almost like there's a no-win situation here that, that's being laid upon a private club. You're not paying enough, but if we make you pay what we're asking you to pay, you're gonna make people pay for that. Well, how else do you get the money? You're gonna make people pay for that, that's how you pay for the expenses of the, of the resources you use. So if we're gonna raise, which we have raised about 20, 25%, we should expect them to raise the, how much they charge if they have the same number of resources to draw from. And if we wanted to raise more, we should have expected them to raise more. That's what a nonprofit has to do, they have to cover their costs, they're not there to operate at a loss. And, um, when it comes to a nonprofit organization, the same board members that would criticize this nonprofit had no problems with the football situation, which is also a nonprofit using our facilities, at a significant expense to the district. So, I just don't understand this issue about whether it's a nonprofit or not based on our overall history of, of the board, and even the recent history when it comes to the football fields, the Field of Dreams. So, it just sounds very inflammatory to me when you say, you're bringing in a million dollars, and we should get more of that.
Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a big, big difference between the agreement that we just entered into and the agreement that we've had for the last 10 years. The agreement that we entered into recently with, with the soccer club is that the soccer club is actually helping substantially pay for the improvements, which is good. The Express paid zero to help build the south pool. They fundraised, and contributors to the club gave money. But they rented the pool from us for 30,000 years, 30,000 year plus. They were supposed to work to rent out the pool to bring in additional income in, which, um, I don't know if we've been made whole on that yet, but they fell way behind in, in that part, mainly due, as we were told, because of competition with other people building new swimming pools. In addition to that, there was, um, utilities that were paid, custodial costs that were paid, that significantly exceeded the $30,000 that we were bringing in. The original estimate was $125,000 a year in utilities and custodial costs. We're now up to $175,000 a year. So this, I don't know, 80, 85, or whatever we're bringing in, it's gonna be nowhere near what we're gonna need to keep that pool going. And that's not including any capital equipment costs, major maintenance items, on and on and on. So, there's a big difference between the Field of Dreams, which, once every 10 years, we're gonna have to renew the fields, but the money that we're putting away now is going to cover that in the future. Thank you.
Let's, let's put a couple more facts out here. You brought up the custodial amount, Mr. Edlin, and that is something that will be paid by the Express. So in addition to the $87,300 of rental fees, they will be paying for any custodial costs that go above and beyond our custodians that have to work during their normal hours.
Okay.
So if you were to take that into consideration, and Ms. Clifton, you can help me out here with some of the facts. If we were to take those custodial costs from last year, and you added that on to the 87.3, wouldn't we be somewhere around $130,000 is really what they'd be paying?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the, the 87.3 is only the rental part. They will be paying for the additional custodial. So there's, there's more in this contract in terms of fees for this particular club, and I wanted to point that, that fact out. The other thing, though, is although the Express, as Mr. Edlin had said, they fell short on some of their dollars, those dollars were made up by citizens in this community who contributed to the Waukesha County Community Foundation. And there was a significant amount of money, and Lori, I don't know if you have that dollar amount, but I believe it was 1.3 million dollars that they had contributed to the, to the building of the swimming pool back in 2000?
It was 1.41.
Or, 1.41? Okay.
I don't have that file with me.
Okay. But it was in that, that 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. So, you know, this community has come together and has supported this organization quite a bit in the past. And I wanted to just share some of those, those facts with you as we discuss this this evening. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, I, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Como, and, and I, I think that's important to bring out. It, it made it sound like they paid nothing. And when you say, well, Express paid nothing, but the people who support Express, and this is how they chose to do it, ended up donating through the foundation, which is the vehicle we and Express set up together to contribute dollars to this program. That, that vehicle is now being phased out, by the way, so we're doing just a direct lease agreement. But, um, so, the community, the people who helped support this from the beginning did contribute the dollars that Mr. Edlin clarified at 1.4 million. that Mr. Edlin clarified at 1.4 million. So it's not like they haven't contributed nothing. Does it cost more than what they're paying us? I wouldn't dispute those concerns at all with Mr. Edlin. What I will say is, again, it's unfair to complain about what people are paying and at the same time criticize them for maybe having to raise their fees to cover it. I just, that just doesn't, I have a hard time with that. That's like beating on the guy with both sides, so.
Mr. Edlin?
You know, maybe I wouldn't have as much of a problem with this if it weren't for the 2,000 referendum and what the taxpayers were told in the approval of that referendum. And that was an engineering study to reline the existing pool at Waukesha South for $800,000. That was a maintenance referendum. We ended up, not with the three and a half million dollar pool that this board was told, we ended up with a 4.2 million dollar swimming pool. The additional money came out of the budget. Okay? I don't know how many board members know what was really going on or what the final cost was. I don't believe that was the final cost either. There were other things that never made it to the forefront. But you know, when you go to tell the public, we want to raise your taxes, and here's what we're going to do with your money, you damn well better stick to it. Okay? I really do have a problem with, you know, stating one thing and then all of a sudden doing another. The Express came to us after the referendum. If the Express wanted to do this, they should have done it before the referendum. The board should have went, made this part of the referendum, and at least, you know, everything would have been above board. But I, sorry if I offend somebody by saying it that way, but those were the facts, and that's how it played out. Thank you.
So let's think about what the alternative is. Say we don't approve it tonight. Well, next year, that would mean we would have $150,000 we'd have to take from somewhere else, from some program, cut some teacher, something along those lines. We would not have those revenues. And then those revenues going forward at about $130,000 each year. There is no other club that will fill, will take that. So from my perspective, it's been a, it's been a good relationship. The discussions that I have had with constituents on this is they're very much in support of athletics in general in this community, whether it be soccer, football, swimming. There's some sports that don't need the larger facilities, but this community is extremely supportive of activities for our children after school. And it's really an important part. I think of the socialization of the relationship buildings, the team buildings, the extension of the classroom and the lessons to be learned. And I just think this is a fantastic opportunity, swimming, football, baseball, whatever those athletics are. That's really an important part of our children's livelihood. And just a little bit on the expense side of things. Mr. O'Brien had mentioned, it takes about a million, they take in about a million dollars. And you're right, that's not profit. That's what's taken in. But let's not forget, I believe, and Lori, you might have to help me here, how many part-time people do they have? 70? I thought it was 70 part-time people. So there's a fairly significant staff that they hire. Another thing that's in this contract that I'd like to just share with you is, Express manages that facility. Well, what does that mean? That saves us money. Our athletic director there does not have to schedule that pool. Our other athletic directors do have to take time at North and South to do that. So there's some other things that they've done throughout the years, too, including purchasing extra equipment, volunteering their time to do certain things, and actually having their time put forth to make sure the safety of the pool is appropriate. So there's a number of things in this contract that aren't money necessarily oriented, but do save us money from a soft dollars perspective. So I'm very much in favor of this.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about the people involved with Express and their community service that they provided the community over the years. Morgan Hobb was very active in the Express group and was active in promoting the building of the pool. Jeff and Sarah Wiener, very active in the community. Jeff donated a tremendous amount of his time to do the fundraising to help with the dollars that they were promised to the district from Express. And Andy Shazer, who's now the president of Express, Andy is very well-known in this community from his work with Thrivant Financial. His professional life is community service, and his post-professional life will be community service. So when you look at the quality of the people that were associated with Express and with getting this done, their community service role speaks for itself. They're not out the profit off the school district of Waukesha. It's all about doing something they believe in that's good for our community and for our children.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Thank you, Mr. Como. I think we all can agree that the original contract was not the most equitable agreement we could have entered into. However, I do believe that the new agreement is a step in the right direction, while not the stick-it-to-'em agreement that some people wanted. I believe that it is a positive agreement with the increase in the custodial staff expenditures and also the sinking, the $20,000 for the sinking fund. I think that we are moving in the right direction to rectify some of the mistakes that were made in the past.
I think we'll wrap up the comments at this time, and we have a motion on the floor to approve the sports facility usage agreement with Waukesha Swim Express. Sue, will you take the roll call?
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
No.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Motion passes 7-1, Sue. Okay, Mr. O'Brien?
Well, now we have the information items, our monthly budget report. The committee received the monthly budget report for activity through July 2014. $64,921 was reported into general fund revenue, and $4,874,140 was expended during the month. No revenue was received in the special education fund, and $80,178 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection. 84% of the taxes levied have been collected. The second information item is on our wellness program. We had an excellent presentation on wellness by Melissa Beck, who's picking up the program from Mr. Bothwell. It was an outstanding presentation she made. She updated this committee on the wellness program for student and employees of the school district of Waukesha. It shows the challenges with measuring over a period of time as your workforce changes. You know, we've had a lot of retirees, and we have a lot of new people coming in, and you're not measuring the same people year to year. But we can certainly see the benefits of the wellness program, and she's looking for creative ways to improve on the value of that program. I have no discussion items, and, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. We will move on to our next report, which is curriculum instruction given by Mrs. Brusink.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no action items this evening, and we have two information items. Our curriculum instruction meeting was held on Tuesday, August 5th, at 6 o'clock PM. The past few months, we have not had any items, agendas for full board, but I'm happy to say that this evening, we do have a few informational items that we would like to share with you. The first is about the professional development planning for 2014, 2015. Assistant Superintendent Ryan Cron is here with us to provide the Board of Education details of the 2014, 2015 School District of Waukesha Professional Development Plan, including dates, details, and offerings. Professional development topics include literacy and numeracy training, Waukesha's Personalized Summer Institute, also known as PSI, new teacher training and support, teacher development classes, TDP, and collegial studies. Would you like to add anything, Mr. Cron?
No, just that we've had a great turnout. PSI Week is happening this week.
Yes.
With over half the staff attending optional learning, and over 800 of the staff attended the literacy training in July, which is the first time we've all.
Very good. Great attendance. Thank you. Second item is educator effectiveness update. Back in the spring of 2013, we began the educator effectiveness training as a pilot in just a few of our buildings. As a district, we took the opportunity to learn the educator effectiveness system during the 2013, 2014 school year. Sarah Berent, Director of Leadership Development, I don't think she's here this evening, however, she is available to highlight the learning that has occurred as a result of the 2013, 2014 school year. So if you have any questions, please feel free to contact Sarah. Lastly, I would like to place on your readers that you'll be seeing elementary recess on the agenda in the near future as a discussion item. And for those of you who are not on the CNI Committee, I did put a report on your desk. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the curriculum instruction report. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. We'll now move on to our Human Resources Committee report by Ms. Madden. Okay? I'm sorry, by Steve Edlin.
I think that's a habit, isn't it?
I'm sorry, Steve.
I thought he was mad at me or something. Why would anybody be mad at me?
Steve, there were so many years that Pat had chaired that committee, and I just, old habits die hard. I'm sorry, Pat.
That's okay.
And I'm sorry, Steve.
No problem at all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Don't cry.
We have one action item this evening, the approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. The administration is recommending Joseph Cook for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Mr. Cook's talents include a strong work ethic, being a good communicator, and being approachable. References describe him as dedicated, hardworking, dependable, and knowledgeable educator who has developed not only leadership skills, but also ensuring individualized instruction for all students. He works collaboratively with others and is described as a listener. Joe has been the Director of Special Services and Pupil Services in the Cedarburg School District since 2012, and prior to that, he was the Director of Special Education and Pupil Services at Two Rivers Public School. His background also includes positions of Associate High School Principal and Special Education Teacher over his many years in education. Mr. Cook is working toward a doctorate in leadership from Cardinal Stritch University and has earned a master's degree of science from the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee in special education, as well as a master's degree in educational leadership from Cardinal Stritch University. He's a Licensed Director of Special Education and Pupil Services, Principal, Learning Disabilities, and Emotional Disabilities teacher. A confidential recommendation and resume were included in your board packet. Salary and fringe benefits will be according to the executive administrator's salary schedule. I move to approve the appointment of Joseph Cook to the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion?
Yes, I just would like to say, I said to Mr. Cron earlier this evening, he has a very, very impressive resume, lots of, lots of rich experiences, and we've had some real, real good leadership in the district in special education and student services for a long, long time. So it looks like he capably will be able to just step in and keep us going, because that's a very important part of our work.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, and I was going to comment on that. You know, Waukesha has had a long history and reputation for being one of the more outstanding school districts in the state for special needs students.
Oh, yes.
I've known parents of special needs students that didn't want to leave Waukesha because of the services that were provided historically here in the school district of Waukesha. And, you know, Mr. Hazly led that program for many, many years and did an excellent job, and I think his replacements have done just as well and carried on a great program. When I look at the qualifications and resume and background of the candidate, I see no red flags. I see everything that we'd be looking for to carry on the tradition here in Waukesha. What I would like to do is, at some point, as a board or with the administration, review the history of student services and see where we're at today versus where we've been historically, and make sure we're heading in the right direction going forward.
Thank you.
I'm a little concerned, just a little bit of exposure I've had to student discipline, that we may need to do some tweaking there, and I don't think we're accomplishing the things that we used to try to accomplish through that program. And it's something that I'm hoping that we can sit down with administration review when the new candidate gets on board.
We're actually looking at a whole new program in that area. So hoping that we can start to kick that off.
Okay. Mr. McCaffrey?
Definitely, I think, you know, just to echo Mrs. Brusink and Mr. O'Brien's comments about the candidate and how qualified he looks, but just to say that he has big shoes to fill, and we will definitely miss Jen.
Oh, yes.
And all the work that she's done for the district. I've known her for a long time, and I knew her when she was the principal at Prairie, so she will be missed, I'm sure, by the entire staff and the students.
Mr. Baumgart?
I wanted to say the same thing. We kind of snuck that through in the pink sheets earlier.
I was hoping for some no votes on that, but I.
We're not going to get a no vote from me, because it's right for her to move, but it is going to be a big loss, and I actually had a chance to do a little chat with her, not a formal exit thing, but I did meet with her last week and talked to her, and I talked to her also about the replacement, and she's pretty up for this. She thinks we're going to be fine, and of course, and I think in all honesty, what this district has shown in the past is that through the leadership that we have within the district when new people come in, we got them all around us. They grow with us and become outstanding leaders themselves. So I know that Joe will be coming into a group of leaders that will help him get acquainted with how we do things here, and with the background he's got, which is exceptional.
Yep.
I think we'll be just fine. We've always proved that we can be just fine. You know, we've lost lots of good people over the years, and all we do is get better.
Yeah, I also want to echo what everybody else has said, and particularly recognize Ms. Wimmer, when she took over some of our programs, a lot of them had shortcomings in them. And she kind of took it very personal to be able to get things back on the right track again. And it took a lot of work and a lot of collaboration with other people in her area to get things back on track again, particularly over at Harvey Phillips Building, and I think it's been a big success. I also want to thank Ms. Hedstrom, because anytime you have an executive position like this that opens up, it's a big job to fill that position.
You bet.
And I know, like, this summer with all of these, we have approved tonight 47, something like that, new hirings. That's a lot of work. So, Ms. Hedstrom, thank you.
You've been busy this summer and this last spring, and a whole group of administrators, too, that are involved with the process. So thanks for all the hard work. I had a chance to talk to Jen, too. Just so you know, she's leaving for a superintendent's position, so this is going to be her first superintendency. She plans on having a bat phone installed in Todd's office for direct calls. She had mentioned that to me, and we.
The screening thing, I don't know.
That's right, and.
She's paying for it.
And Jen had also really, I had a chance to talk with Jen, and she's going to miss us.
Oh, yes.
And she really put a lot into this, a lot into this district, and she really cares. She's a very authentic person, and she took on some very tough things, as you said, Mr. Edlin, and we're really proud of her, and we wish her all the best of luck. And I think we'll take the roll call vote now, Sue.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 8-0. Steve?
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
And I apologize again for the poor introduction.
As I said, we could be mad at Mr. Wonderful.
At this time, we don't have any other business, and, Mr. Gray, do we have a need for executive session? All right. Okay, we stand adjourned. Have a good evening.